On the record.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council for April 14th, 2021. Are we on the record?
We're on the record. Microphones are hot.
Yep, I saw the clock going over there. So again, welcome to Hamilton City Council's regular meeting for April 14th, 2021. It's about 6:13. I apologize for the late start on this. We're here at 345 High Street in Hamilton, Ohio. Now, can Colin hear me out there?
Yes.
All right, good. Okay. Let's do a rule call, please.
Pullman.
Present.
Pierre.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Here.
Nab.
Present.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Present.
Okay, we're all here. We're going to start off an offering of prayer by Vice Mayor Eric Pullman, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you are able.
Pullman, we ask of you tonight to continue to watch over our firefighters, police officers, and other first responders that work so hard to keep us safe. Guide this council as we make decisions that impact our city, and we use our best judgment to continue to move forward in our progress. Finally, we ask you to protect and watch over our armed forces as they continue to risk their safety to protect our freedom. We ask this in your name, Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do have, I believe, three special presentations this evening. As we've been doing since the early days of the COVID-19, we are blessed to have, as part of our city team, and to also do these presentations, KFRR Health Commissioner.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, and citizens of the city of Hamilton. I would like to give you an update on where we're at, both with the COVID-19 virus and also our vaccination program. So this is the epidemiological report. This data is current as of today. There have been over 37,543 cases. That's up 1,571 from the last report a month ago. We are at 1,184 hospitalized. That's up 83 from a month ago. We are up to 566 deaths, which is an increase of 31 from last month. As far as the city of Hamilton is concerned, we have had 5,454 cases. We're averaging just slightly over 50 per week. That is just a very slight increase. Last time, we were at 50 per week, so we've nudged up just a little. We're holding safe and still. The city of Hamilton deaths are at 138. There have been an additional five deaths in the last month. The state of Ohio today reported a generalized uptick in COVID-19 cases, and our hospitalizations statewide surpassed 1,300 for the first time in two weeks. So we want to, again, keep an eye on that. That's what we're always concerned about. As you know, our neighboring state, Michigan, is having an outbreak. Also, we also know the predominant form of COVID anymore in the state is now the UK variant, which is more contagious and more deadly. So we still have work to do, but I think overall, at least for the city, we're holding fairly steady. So we just have to stay the course and keep doing what we're doing right now. So who's eligible for COVID-19 vaccinations? Currently, under the emergency use authorization, Pfizer, anyone 16 and up can get that vaccine, Moderna, and Johnson &amp; Johnson, anyone 18 and up. Now, there is a current hold on Johnson &amp; Johnson that was done out of the abundance of caution. U.S.-wide, there's been quite a few doses. I don't remember the exact count, but well over 150,000 doses given. But there were six cases of some unusual blood clotting. They were all female patients, but it's something to be watched and looked at. And so they've put a hold on it. The federal government advised it, and the Ohio Department of Health followed, and we did put a hold on. I do have some Johnson &amp; Johnson in the refrigerator. We haven't administered any since yesterday because of this hold. So what does that mean for you? If you did receive Johnson &amp; Johnson more than a month ago, you're at very, very low risk. If you received the vaccine in the last few weeks and start experiencing a severe headache, abdominal pain, leg pain, or shortness of breath, within three weeks of when you were vaccinated, you should contact your health care provider or go to an emergency room or an urgent care and let them know that you did receive the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. Again, it's out of the abundance of caution. They are meeting today, the ACIP, which is the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices. I don't know the outcome of that, because actually, the meeting was about when I was doing the slide presentation. But they will do, go over and review all the data as we do. We meet as, you know, for various things. We do a, just, all the health departments meet regularly and look over death data and go over, you know, various outcomes. And so they're doing that exact same review, and it will be looked at very closely. One other implication of that hold on Johnson, those regional mass vaccination clinics that I told you about last time, they were using Johnson &amp; Johnson. Because it was, while there were 16 regional sites, people were driving a far way to get to those, and the thought was, we give a one-and-done, so people may be willing to take that very large drive one time, but then they're done. So right now, with the hold on Johnson &amp; Johnson, it has affected the southwest region. Predominantly, the Wilmington site is right now under a permanent pause. The Cincinnati Centos Center is not being used. Kroger has instead moved to giving all their vaccine at stores, their individual pharmacy stores, and they are using, obviously, Moderna and Pfizer. And then the Dayton location has pivoted to also using Pfizer. And they had enough of that vaccine to offer to anyone that comes on board, so. As far as vaccinations are concerned, the city of Hamilton Health Department is operating drive-through clinics currently at the Butler County Fairgrounds every Thursday. So we run from 9:00 a.m. till 5:00 p.m. and have a SurveyMonkey sign-up for our website. And the website is hamilton-oh.gov, or you can call 785-7080, choose the COVID-19 option, and ask to be scheduled for a vaccination. Our last day at the fairgrounds will be May the 13th, as we move to a new approach. So our vaccination numbers in Butler County overall, I divided them out by age, so you can kind of see the saturation of where we're at. We've gotten very good percentile coverage from everything from about 65 and up. So that's, again, where we started. So you can see, we did a very good job of that, and we're still continuing to vaccinate those younger age groups. But we really want to hit that 70%-ish coverage to get to that herd immunity. So by ZIP code, I divided it out, and as far as, I only pulled out the city of Hamilton ZIP codes. And 45011 is the largest ZIP code in the state of Ohio. As you know, population-wise, it's 71,000. So we've done about 31% of the population overall, which equates to 22,409 individuals. In the 45013, we're at 31.1%. The population there is 54,333, and we've vaccinated 16,910. In the 45015, this is surprising me each and every time. We're very low. I'm not sure why. We're continuing, Jacob and Brandon are helping me do outreach in that area of Lindenwald, but we're, you know, it's a lower-populated place, but we're only at 21%. So we continue to reach out. We've actually gone door-to-door and knocked and had some of our volunteers help people register in case they were having difficulty doing the online registration. So vaccinations done so far by the city and Health Department and our partners, never to leave out, we've got EMA out there, EMS. We have wonderful partners, and there's a lot of city staff helping. But so far, we've given 14,322 vaccines to date. Very proud of that. We're very close to the number that Butler County has administered, so we're really trucking it. We have about 1,100 people come through our drive-through at this point each week, and this will explain the reason why we're moving away from the mass vax. So this week, tomorrow, there's only 220 first dosers. So the rest of those would be second doses, and there are around 950 that are returning. So if you look at it four weeks from now, when with the Moderna, they're due for their second dose, we'll only have 230 first dosers due. So, you know, we're showing, we're seeing a decrease in the number of people that want to do that type of vaccination clinic, so we're going to move on to a different mode. So we are also, at the same time, have been targeting places that include underserved populations and people who have, who may have difficulty getting to the clinic because of their employment circumstances, like shift workers. So we have vaccinated at doctors' offices, ServCITY, manufacturing and business center haven, DecoRehab, New Life Missions. Tomorrow, we are at the fairground, and Friday, we are going to Booker T. Washington Center from 11:00 to 2:00. We're going to have a walk-in type clinic. People could also schedule and reserve times, and we do have some reserved times. But we're going to take anybody who walks in and wants a vaccine. And we've very, we've gone door-to-door and published it and pushed it out as much as possible. And then we will be back four weeks later to do the second shot, and we're going to reach out more to the churches to try to help them feed into that same location. And again, we're going to finish up at the fairgrounds, 5:13. Since we are no longer getting that large a number of first doses, I feel like there's a choice for us to target folks. And let us never forget, and this is my heart of hearts, a virus that is not replicating cannot form a variant. So please help me to help the citizens of Hamilton understand that we really do have to vaccinate if we're going to win this and not go back into a lockdown situation and start all over. This virus already has shown us it can form variants. The current variants are covered by this vaccine, but how long until the variant is not covered by the vaccine, and then we start all over? And I'm not trying to make threats to anyone, I'm just asking for help and for understanding, and please help us to educate people and to help them get scheduled and get vaccinated. Are there any questions for me?
Any questions, please?
Are we seeing a decrease in the number of residents wanting to get vaccinated?
It seems that way from those numbers. I mean, right now, we have only 230 scheduled new for tomorrow. So, I mean, you know, last week, the numbers for new sign-ups were about 600. So, I mean, it could be that they are finding places elsewhere, which I don't have to vaccinate everyone. I've got lots of partners. We have a lot of, you know, pharmacies and other places doing it. But I think what it's telling us is people don't want to possibly do the drive-through anymore. Maybe that's not what they want. Our best day at the drive-through was two Thursdays ago. We did 2,130, and I was so super proud of that. We, and it was a fun day. We had a lot of fun. I have a lot of fun out there. We had a lot of college kids come from Miami, and the mama in me had to tell them, "Your mom would be so proud of you for taking this and doing the right thing and coming and getting vaccinated." So, and a couple of them came out of their cars and hugged me. So it was just, it was a very touching moment, but there are, there are a lot of ways to get vaccinated, so I don't necessarily know it's 100% vaccine hesitancy, but that does scare me. As a public health official, it scares me.
What's the magic number? We're, I mean, aside from saying 100%.
It's not, we're never going to get to 100%. I mean, we know that. Scientists are watching it very closely. It will be the number that we stop seeing increases and stop seeing variants being made. And most educated people in the line of epidemiology feel it's somewhere between 70% and 85% vaccinated. So we have a ways to go. But we're, if you think about where we were when we started, and this has been a very short vaccine start, and you got to remember, we have to vaccinate almost everyone twice to get one completed. So it's a very heavy lift. Like I said, I have, I would be remiss if I don't thank all the partners I've had and wonderful volunteers, and we actually have fun out there. We really do. Susan knows, she's out there. You know Carla. So we laugh, and we carry on, and we have a good time, and we do get hugs, and we get lots of thank yous, so. But it's been a good effort. But I do think there's probably, at this point in time, other ways to help people that are having, that are struggling with that. And I think one of them still is shift workers, so we're reaching out to even more of our manufacturing plants and et cetera that have shifts, so we can go there between first and second shift. I don't even mind hitting them, you know, later on at the night. We're going, we're doing some churches, so we're doing some Sunday vaccinations. We're going to be out at the flea market twice. We're just, we're just thinking ways out of the box. We're actually going to Hides, because I know there's a lot of elderly people that eat at Hides and love their pie. I do, too. So we're going to go there. We're going to call it, you know, Pie and Vaccinate Day. So we're trying everything we can try to try to hit, you know, the masses. And I think that, you know, I think there's still people interested, because certainly, when we contact people, actually, Hides contacted us a while back and said they would be interested in helping in any way they were. And then when we called and said, "We've got two booths aside for you, so we're going to go there. We're all going to have lunch together." So we help support her, because she's going to be giving up business for, you know, us to hold two booths for a little while, and we're going to have, we're going to have fun. We're going to continue to have fun, because that's what we have to do.
Thank you, Kay.
Yeah.
These are questions.
Okay. In collecting all of the data that you collected, and you talked about partners that are also administering shots, pharmacies, Kroger, what have you, are those numbers captured in your bottom line?
Yes.
They are.
They're all required to report. Now, when I give city of Hamilton Health Department numbers, those are just ours, what we vaccinated. We really have done 14,400 and some vaccines. But yeah, when we're showing county-wide how many are vaccinated, that's everybody. That's including the hospitals who have vaccinated their own, and it goes by ZIP code. So if they live and reside in the city of Hamilton, it goes, or Butler County, it goes to Butler County. So we've vaccinated very many early on, doctors and et cetera, that actually live in Warren County and otherwise, because that's what we were told to do. We were told to vaccinate for Hamilton, you know, the nursing home staff and et cetera, so.
Yes. Tell me, other municipalities are at 16 and up age group? Were it 19, I believe?
We have, we have to do 18 and up with Moderna.
Okay. And if you had to take a firm number, we know our population is just over 62,000 residents here in the city. If you took a number, would it be 28,000 that were hopeful or 35,000?
Yeah, we're, we're at about 30-some percent. So yeah, it would be a third of those that are vaccinated.
And that helps spread the word, too, that, as we understand, four-year-olds and 12-year-olds and those residents, if you will, that their families, what have you, live here, but that target audience of that 18 and up, hopefully, will understand that, again, the opportunity is here to sign up. And if you choose not to go through the fairgrounds or other opportunities that you're offering, and just, please, register, talk to the people that want to help you become vaccinated and then inoculated to avoid pandemic opportunity.
Right. And meanwhile, Pfizer is doing the studies to go down to age 12. It will be the same dose, same exact vaccine. They're not altering at all, but they have to go through the studies nonetheless, again, to see if there's any change in the reaction from 12-year-olds till age 16. So that will be rolled out soon. I would imagine those will be done either in the school setting itself, at which time we may be getting Pfizer and doing that. But we will continue to evolve wherever we're needed.
Any other questions at all? Thanks for being so open with us and answering our questions that we have at the meetings as well as outside the meetings.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. Second special presentation is Rich Engel.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I want to discuss with you our proposed 2021 capital projects that will include our resurfacing program as well. Our 2020 concrete repair and resurfacing program has been bid. Our contractor is proven, if you might recall, that they did the East High Street project for us a few years ago. Good contractor that will do a fine job for us. The funding sources we'll be using are the street levy funds, infrastructure renewal funds, stormwater, and property assessments. The bid price was nearly $4.6 million. We will be performing resurfacing on 25 streets in the city, total of 4.3 centerline miles. Contractor is going to be beginning within the next couple of weeks, and the completion will be of May 2022. I've got highlights of some of the streets we're going to be working on. This particular neighborhood, Cleveland Schultz, north to the end of it, Jeremy, all of Jeremy, all of Joshua, all of Callan, Tabor Lane, from Cleveland to Thaw, and Thaw from Tabor to Tatum. This will be a Cape Seal project. One of the ways we're going to be doing our resurfacing program is to be doing surface treatment on streets to extend their life. So this will extend the life of these streets another seven to 10 years, so we don't have to do the major milling and resurfacing program in the future, at least right away. North Edgewood, from Park to Ray, Ray from North Dick to Eaton. Elmont, Western to Hunt. Some significant ones in the west side of the city, Fairborn, Timber Hill to Thoreau, Heathrow Court, Heathrow from Fairborn to Heathrow Court, Kensington, Fairborn South to the cul-de-sac, Fairborn Court, and Sunnybrook Court. Alderman, we're going to be doing resurfacing, Armo to Eaton. And this particular section will include new sidewalk from Eaton to Marcia in order to accommodate the students that walk from the middle school into the neighborhood. We had a public meeting with Planning Department's help, discussed this with residents. I got a lot of positive comments about this particular project. And then in Linden, primarily Madison-St. Clair to the Clinton Avenue alley, and then some of the side streets, Chase, Bro, Hayes, Noize, from Benning Hoffman to Madison. These streets are a little, we have some water main issues that we need to discuss further for those streets. And also Monument from Neeland to Herm, Herm and Stevens as well. Monument also has some water main concerns with the age of the pipe, so we're going to push this up to next year, and hopefully, we can get some other funds to take care of the water main before we resurface it. We also have a project that will be bid probably in later July or early August. It's a combined water main replacement and concrete repair and resurfacing project on Sanders and Leo Drive. Funding sources will be an Ohio Public Works Commission grant, water funds, street levy funds, infrastructure renewal, stormwater, and property assessments. Contractor is yet to be determined. Estimated cost is $2.66 million, of which $1.1 million will be a Ohio Public Works grant for the water main replacement. We'll have five streets, 1.2 centerline miles. Schedule will begin probably in September and be completed in June of next year. And because of the issues we've had with water funding, we've made a conscious decision to shift our Ohio Public Works grant funding from the street resurfacing program to the water project, so that we can get more water projects done prior to resurfacing. And fortunately, we have the street levy money that's supporting our resurfacing programs The water main project will include Leo from Northwest Washington to Sanders, Sanders from Eaton to east of Hermay and Carroll Court. And then behind, after we get the water main replaced, the resurfacing program will include Leo Drive, all of it from Mark to Sanders, Sanders Drive from Eaton to east of Hermay, Kelly Court, Carroll Court, and Hermay, Sanders to Mark. Also, you're well aware that we're doing the Corwin Avenue Utility Project this year. This will be funding using sanitary sewer. The project includes sanitary sewer replacement, water main replacement, storm sewer, and concrete repair and resurfacing. Funding sources include sanitary water, street levy, infrastructure renewal, stormwater, and property assessments. This project is being advertised at the moment, will be bid probably in May. I think that's the bid date. Estimated construction cost is over $3.7 million. One street, 0.74 centerline miles, and the schedule will begin in June of this year and be complete in July of next year. Highlighting the areas for the sanitary sewer, Freeman Avenue to Van Hook Avenue. Water main project will also be from Freeman Avenue to Van Hook Avenue. And for the resurfacing project, it'll be from River Road to Morris Avenue, then Hayes Pleasant to Benning Hoffman. Also, one last project, the Tyler's Road Reconstruction Project, a full reconstruction of Tyler's Road. Funding sources include street levy and infrastructure renewal and stormwater funds. This will be bid later this year. Estimated construction cost is $3.2 million, 1.46 centerline miles. Begin construction later this year, August or September, and complete it approximately one year in next August. And this is the limits of the project from the city corporation line, Easterly, to Gateway Any questions on the proposed project?
Any questions for Director of Engineering, Rich Engel? Thank you, Rich, for being responsive to Corwin Avenue residents and the other residents of the streets that are being taken care of.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next is Chief Mercer, who's going to talk about Agenda Item Number 11.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, I have, I'd like to share a bit of information about the property registration and some background on why that's important. To begin with the discussion on why it's important to control these properties or to make sure that we get ahead of them, I'd like to talk about a little bit of statistics and a little bit of a story about a specific block in our town. So in 2019, if we look at the fires that are in our residential properties, whether they're single-family or multifamily, 21% of those are in vacant properties. In 2020, 2021... In 2020, 23% of those were in vacant properties. And it's hard to understand why a property with nobody in it becomes a problem or why there's a fire in there. There are a variety of reasons, and we work to address those. To deal with some of that, let's put the 900 block of Greenwood in perspective. And the 900 block of Greenwood is an old neighborhood. It is, the houses are close together. They're wood-framed construction. They're very susceptible to fire. Starting in January of 2019, there was a fire at 940 Greenwood. And that house was occupied. It was in normal use. In February of 2019, there was a vacant, a house, a fire in a vacant house, 914 Greenwood, February 9th of that year. The house was vacant and unsecured. The same house on February 26th, so 17 days later, caught fire. You know, these are, these are properties that are long-term vacant. They're blight in the neighborhood. And in that particular case, same fire, same house, two days or, you know, two weeks apart. Rolling forward into July of 2020, there was a vacant house at 920 Greenwood. We're on the same block. This is going to be eight fires in two years in one block. This is, this is a neighborhood that has just been decimated by the blight. So that fire at, on 715 of 2020, 920 Greenwood was in a vacant house. That vacant house was demolished after the fire. The exposure on the left side, 918 Greenwood, which was occupied by a family at that time, was damaged. And then from that point forward, it was not occupied. The building on the right side of it, 922, was also damaged by the fire, and it was demolished. So in this block, we've lost two houses. And in that fire, it damaged a third. That third house, which was at 918 Greenwood, sat vacant. It was purchased as an investment property the month following that and sat vacant, causing blight in this neighborhood for, well, to this current day, it's still standing there. It was declared a nuisance. Nuisance Appeal Board heard on it, ruled that it needed to be demolished. And three weeks after that ruling for the demolition on that property, it caught fire again. At this time, that property became an emergency demolition due to the damage. And it exposed the house next to it at 916, the house that was occupied by a woman and three children. And they, they were renters in the house. They had to move out. So the property was damaged. The people have lost all of their property. The importance of controlling these vacant and blighted homes is, it couldn't be overstated. So to the Fire Department, we look at saving lives and property. And at this point, the blight in this, in the city, in specific areas, is important for us to control.
Mr. Mayor, I hate to interrupt, but it seems the people outside are having an issue with hearing the presentation. Do you mind if I try to turn up the volume and possibly Chief Mercer restart his presentation?
Yes, we can do that.
It's all, maybe this will help a little bit.
Yeah.
When am I speaking directly into the microphone? I think that might help a bit.
Got it. Okay, have you turned it up yet?
I turned up the volume outside, sir. I think if, if he speaks directly into the microphone, that will also help with higher, with more volume.
We will all do that. I'm sorry myself.
Okay. I'll go ahead and recap the, the first part of the presentation or the discussion. And I'd like to just mention a few statistics from our fires in 2019 and 2020. For a city that has a fairly large population, 65,000, we have a pretty high fire, fire load. In 2019, of the fires that were in residential properties, whether they be single properties or multifamily or apartments, 21%, nearly 22% of our fires were in vacant properties. In 2020, that number was 23.4%. So a large percentage of our residential fires are in vacant residential properties. To recap a little bit of the story, I want to talk about the 900 block of Greenwood and the timeline on this. We'll just cover the last approximately two years. So in January of 2019, there was a fire at 940 Greenwood. That, that residence was in normal use. It was occupied. Of these, of these eight individual instances, I'll talk about, four of these or half of the properties were vacant at the time of the fire. February 9th of 2019, there was a fire at 914 Greenwood, and the property there had been vacant for some time. It was vacant and unsecured at the time of the fire. Fire Department went, we put out the fire, and we secured the building. Within two weeks later, on February 26th of the same year, there was another fire in the same building. So this property that sat vacant in the neighborhood, causing blight in the 900 block of Greenwood, caught fire twice in two weeks. In July of 2020, there was a fire at 920 Greenwood, and that fire was in a vacant home. The vacant, the house had been vacant for some time, and it was not secured. It was, it was vacant but secured, but obviously, somebody had gotten in there. During that fire, there was damage to the houses on either side of that. So on the left side of the building, 918 Greenwood, at that point, that building, that house was occupied by a family, but they had to move out after the fire due to the damage at 920. On the other side was 922 Greenwood, and there was, that house was occupied at the time of the fire. But again, after that fire, that house had to be demolished. So during the fire, July 17th of 2020, the vacant house had to be demolished after the fire. The occupied house to the right of it had to be demolished after the fire. And the occupied house to the left of it then became vacant. All right? Shortly after that fire, in July, the property was purchased by an investment company. The, the investment company has done nothing with the home since then. So since July, it is set empty. It has been declared nuisance by the Health Department. It has been appealed to the Nuisance Appeal Board, and the Nuisance Appeal Board ruled that it needed to be demolished. Three weeks after the ruling, the house caught fire again. So that same property has now burned twice. And as a result of that second fire at 918, it also extended into the house at 916 Greenwood. So this, again, this vacant house, the blight in the neighborhood caused the homeowner to have damage. And the renters who live there lost everything that they had and had to find a new place to live. So a mother and three children out of their home due to the blight of this unmaintained property. With all of that said, that is the, the most dramatic story of what this blight causes in our city. But we see it time and time again, that the vacant properties, if they're not maintained, if they're not secured, they're, they're, they're going to be those problems for the neighborhoods. With that, and not exactly because of that specific instance, but because this is, this is the story of how fires and how blight affects the city, we intend to, and we've proposed to modify the legislation on the vacant properties. Now, what we're looking for with that is a way to control blighted properties. Clearly, we don't want to have any impact on something that is empty for a couple of months because somebody has to go to a nursing home or something is up for sale and it's well-maintained. You know, certainly, properties are empty from time to time, but that doesn't mean that they're vacant and blighted. There are dozens or maybe 100 homes in the city that are that inherent blight that causes problems for our city. With that, the registration process allows for us to identify an owner, to hold somebody accountable for the condition of the home, and to reach out directly if there's a problem. There are a lot of ways that we would say we would exempt them from this. And based on the same legislation that's currently in place for the commercial properties, we would apply those to the residential properties as well. Basically, for, one of those is that it's listed with a real estate agent. And we know that people move. We know that they sell their homes. We know that sometimes they sit for several months at a time. If they're listed, they're maintained. Obviously, they're exempted from registration. We don't, we don't need to be in the middle of something that's, that's being taken care of. If there's fire or storm damage due to whatever, hurricane or, or in the case of this house that we just talked about on Greenwood, there would be an exemption for that, to the point where they can get their building secured and they can work to get it repaired and reoccupied. If there's an active building permit for a building, then they're also exempted from that. So while you're working on a building, you're not, you're not registered. You're, you're simply taking care of your building and getting it done. We realize that people are out of their homes for, for a variety of reasons, and some of those are for rehabilitation or renovation. And then the fourth reason for that is for a good cause approved by the Fire Chief. As we looked at the commercial properties, they're vacant for a variety of reasons. And some of those have been vacant for years, and some of them have been blight in neighborhoods for years. But again, just like every other property, sometimes they're empty or closed because a business owner has become sick or they've had to move along or they're selling their property. As I look at those things and grant the exemptions on them, I'm exceptionally liberal on that. If somebody has a property and they have a need and they're communicating, the property is maintained and it's not causing a problem in the neighborhood, to me, that is good justification that they're taking care of their property and that it's not blight and it's not causing problems in our neighborhood. We want to support those business owners and those building owners, and we don't want to make it a burden on them. But we also don't want the citizens to have to own the cost and own the blight that they're living next to. We had originally proposed a 60-day period of vacancy for this registration over the past few years. And as we all know, everything has been put on hold for a variety of reasons. I think it's been about two years ago that we met with the Investment Property Owners Association. Now, as we meet with them and we get feedback, especially recently as the legislation gets closer, they've asked for a change in that. And instead of a 60-day registration period, it moved to 120 days. And we think that makes sense. By the time it takes to list a home and sell a home or get it cleaned out, if there's a problem, you know, a parent dies or, you know, grandmother moves or has to be in a home, we understand that, that 60 days is a short timeline. So clearly, we want to make that 120 days and get that squared away. The purpose is not to have any involvement in short-term vacancies. What we're looking at is making sure that we're taking care of our citizens' needs and that, that blight that is introduced by people who just aren't able and they're not willing to take care of their properties, that we have a way to take care of that and to take care of our citizens. And with that, I would entertain any, any questions, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, any questions Council has, Chief Mercer.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Chief, what's the, who pays for the demolition of the homes most of the time?
Yep. So when, when a house is demolished, there are a handful of ways that it could get paid for. If it is, if it's, if it's paid for, in the past, there's been funding through Butler County Land Bank, most of that opportunity has gone away. If there is, if there's no owner that's, that's, that can be identified, the house is demolished by the city, and then the cost is recouped through tax lien. And now, if it's a vacant and abandoned property and that never happens, well, then the cost is always on the city. What we have done with, with the Nuisance Appeal Board for those properties that the owner is able and willing to demolish, recently, there was one on Heaton Street. The owner demolished it, and, and they owned the cost on that. So the city can recoup some of the cost if there's a tax lien on it. But for the most part, a lot of times, the properties are vacant and abandoned, and there's, there's not a good opportunity. So when it comes right down to it, the cost of the blight is borne by every citizen that pays their taxes here.
Other questions or comments? I want to say, so the Fire Department has a real active role in this ordinance, looks like. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And that's for safety reasons?
Absolutely.
Citizen safety, adjoining folks who live next to a vacant house? It's also for firefighter safety as well?
Yes. And, and we all can look back five years to some tragic times in the city of Hamilton. You know, for me, I look at, at those opportunities to, to keep our firefighters safe. That's important for us. You know, we want to keep our, our citizens safe. We want to keep them happy and healthy. And we want to make sure that our firefighters are safe as well.
Vacant properties registered with the Fire Department, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then the vacant property plan is approved by you or your designee?
Yes. So when we look at what those things are, with the commercial properties, there is a commercial property code. We work with Health Department on that enforcement, Building Department, and Police for Security. Same thing with, with the, with the residential properties. The Health Department is very much involved in what that is, and securing it is more on our side.
Other questions or comments from anybody? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay. We now go to Audience of Citizens. And Audience of Citizens, for the last...
Mayor?
Please.
There is still one more special presentation, at least from either Mr. Tom Vanderhorst or...
Oh, sure.
I think it's about a liquor permit.
I apologize.
Good evening, Mayor, members of Council. I'm here to speak with you about Item Number 20, which currently is directing the city clerk to request a hearing, determine whether such liquor permit shall be denied in its 4930 Pyramid Hill Boulevard. Recently, the applicant's attorney contacted the city and asked us to look at this process, which we did yesterday and today. And this afternoon, I spoke with the State of Ohio's Attorney, Dominic Panzer. And I really think that in order to make the city of Hamilton a little bit more business-friendly to do business in, I think that I would like to start looking at a process for the D1 to D5 alcohol permits, which is the consumption on the premises for restaurants and nightclubs, that we not file objections on those, especially for the new permits. And the counselor for the city, or for the state, said that he's seen cities do it both ways. And I think for us, it makes a lot of sense because we have so many checks and balances in place already to give hard stop on these alcohol permits. So for example, in this particular case, we, this applicant does not have a permit yet, a building permit, but we can provide a hard stop on the building permit by saying no. We can provide a hard stop on the food service operator's license by saying no. And if either of those happen, the permit will not be issued. And considering the golf courses, the Hamilton Parks Conservancy has been trying to transfer the liquor permits for Potters and Twin Run since they took that over. And you've got to stop and think, that's February of 2020. They still haven't been able to get that done. I think that it provides our applicants a better opportunity to get direct support from us, to tell them exactly what they need. And we can direct them through that. And then, once we approve the site, the plan and the food service permit, they can get the, or they can get the permit. So I think that moving forward, I think we're going to look at this process. And I hope that you see a lot fewer objections in cases like this for the new permits. But what I would like for you to do is, for Item Number 20, is to change that to direct the city clerk to notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that the city does not have any objections to that permit.
So and remove Item 20 from the agenda based upon that motion is made and passed. Is that correct, Madam Law Director?
Right, that's, that's absolutely right.
Okay. So you said business-friendly? And the applicant doesn't necessarily leave their place in line or anything like that?
Well, that was one of my concerns because when I found out what the process did at the state level, what he told me is it would take a couple of months just for them to schedule the show cause hearing. And at that point in time, it would be very likely that the issues that needed to be addressed for the permit to be approved by us would already be resolved. And he says, if that's the case, then they would start the processing. But as it is, even though it would technically be approved at the state level, it would not be issued at the local level until we give the green light with the certificate of occupancy and we issue the food service permit.
So there's a request that we consider that motion. Can we do that right now?
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there someone I'm... Is there someone on council who wants to make that particular motion that was read to us by Mr. Vanderhorst?
So moved. A second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Brown, somebody, Councilmember Fear. Any discussion on this motion has been made at this time? Hearing none? Roll call vote?
Pullman?
Stay.
It's an extension. Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Neb?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
That motion is adopted. Six, six, yes, six yeas, zero nays and one step, extension.
We take number 20 off of our agenda. Okay. Will that take care of it then?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Now we go to audience of citizens and truly several, several months is for social distancing purposes, we've been having those who wish to make a comment or ask questions for council or administration, to email their questions or comments to the city clerk. The city clerk would then read the comments into the record during the appropriate council meeting. But for this particular meeting, we're going to do some kind of a hybrid situation. I'm not sure if we're going to need to read into the record tonight, Mr. City Clerk, but we do have some folks out in the hallway who wish to make some comments about some legislation, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Now, so the rules are going to be this, speakers will be escorted to the podium, one at a time for the lobby area. The speaker must keep their mask on while speaking and they must speak directly towards council, not the audience, so we can all hear that person better. Limited up to five minutes to speak. And the order that we're going to be taking topic-wise will be the vacant building registration first, Adams School second, and somebody had a question about purchase of land on Pleasant Avenue. Now, I'll read a batting order for each particular topic at this time. Regarding the vacant homes, I've got, first, I got Dan Acton, second, I got Phil Morcal, third, I got Greg Lanick, or Lanich, apologize, and fourth, I got Eric Vincent. So somebody please escort Mr. Acton into the council chambers, please. Mr. City Clerk, I don't think we had that clock set for five minutes for how many months?
I can let the timer on my phone, sir.
That'd be fine. Thank you. State your name and your address, please, sir.
Mr. Mayor, before, before clock starts, I do want to address procedurally some, a couple of issues. The volume outside is still not near enough for the members of the public that want to attend the meeting to be able to hear, so I would highly suggest that they, that the city do something more long-term. They've tried to do something and still with traffic and...
Well, let's take the solution for tonight first. And that solution's going to be, you speak loudly through your mask into that microphone as loud as you can so we can hear and so they can hear.
Right.
It may not be a perfect situation, especially during COVID-19, but this is what we're dealing with. So, you know, this, like, like the judge tells us in the court, lawyers, keep your voice up, direct it towards us so we can hear you and keep it loud enough so they can hear it outside.
But that wasn't, that's, that's fine from this moment forward, but from the last 20 minutes, it's not been near loud enough out there. So it's, we've, we've missed a number of comments that the, that the chief and, and others have so meaningfully tried to put forward.
Please do.
So... My name is Dan Acton, 410 Columbia Road, have some concerns over the vacant property ordinance. I'm representing the Ohio Real Estate Investors Association and there are 3,000 members, as well as a board member for the Butler County Real Estate Investors Association. We've met many times over the years, this, the registration is not new. The registration proposals, vacant property proposals are not new. So the comment that November 3rd was, you know, was our comment period, kind of pales in comparison to the number of issues, the number of times we've had city officials actually attend our meetings. We've had council members there, we've had the city manager there, we've had the public safety director, the health director, we've had a number of city officials that we have engaged over a number of years to our organization to, to discuss these issues and our concerns with them. We brought forth several proposals and solutions for property registration, not just for owner-occupied homes, but all of Hamilton homes, so they would not be, so there would not be an issue with contact, or at least it would be minimized. And that's utilizing the utility department's software, so it's not a member of public record. I'm assuming that public safety would also like to be able to get ahold, or utilities or whoever would like to be able to get ahold of vacant homes where someone is in, perhaps in therapy after, you know, having some surgery done. And there's, there's a call for service at that home, that they would like to be able to get ahold of them or be able to know how to do that. But that, there had been no steps taken by the city toward accomplishing that goal. We brought that forth several times. The reason we want the utility department, it's not public record. Not everybody wants everyone to be able to have their phone number and email address. But if it's in the utility department, it's sequestered, it's safely sequestered away. But, you know, the city officials that need it can't access that information. In regarding the chief's comments with fires, I'd like to know how many of the fires were in those vacant properties that were owned by the city of Hamilton and with the land bank. We know for a fact, we had the couple of fires on Arch, on Arch Street that were city properties. Is the city going to accept culpability for those fires? I mean, I'm just, you know, the city has to address their own concerns first, as far as I'm concerned, before they, you know, espouse those ideas or force those ideas on others. And how many, you know, there were at least two, if not three fires, if I'm not mistaken, regarding Hamilton-owned properties. So I think those need to be, in, in all fairness, I think those need to be addressed and they're, they should be, I'm sure they're part of the statistics that were used. So why didn't we hear about those properties and, and those owners that allowed those properties to be open like that? If registered, is, is the Hamilton Fire Department going to have just, is, are they going to take just a defensive posture of attack on those properties? If a property is registered as a vacant property, is there going to be a full, just a defensive attack from the sidewalk to, you know, to try and minimize contact with other properties? Or are they going to search that property anyway? I mean, if, if the sole purpose is to find out what properties are vacant, we don't know. You can Google deaths in boarded-up homes and come up with a number of names. I mean, this is not a one-time, it's, it's, it's not a, an end-all to the, to the issue. I mean, it, are we, is there going to be an entry into those homes to see if there are people in there? I haven't heard that addressed yet. Do you, do you have the answer to that?
I'm not going to make any comment until you get done with your five minutes.
Very good.
One more minute, Mr. Acton.
The other thing, I, and the exemptions are going to be there, I understand, you know, they're, but that seems to be kind of free will or free range. Does the city want the fire chief's office turn into Dr. Phil's office with, with family feuds and my own fam, my own family? I mean, there's been disputes over, over the family trust. I mean, do, do they want to know and should, should someone who has an inpatient relative in for drug treatment or alcohol treatment have to go and disclose that to the chief to, to say that property is vacant now? If they're in for long-term treatment or in for surgery, surgery doesn't go well, they're in for rehab on a hip replacement, they get COVID, and then suddenly they're, they're forced into long-term situation, which one of those city officials is going to force that person out of the nursing home to come fill out an application to, to do, as a registered vacant property? I mean, those are just some, a number of issues. We had asked for yesterday officially in an email, time to table this so we could, we could answer, so we could get some of our questions answered.
That is time, Mr. Mayor.
We were told by a city official today that the city would not buy, buy a city employee today that they were, that they would refuse to table the issue. And double me thought that that was a council issue, that it would be up to council to table. So with that, I'll end those comments.
Sure.
Do you have any other?
I just want to address...
HIPAA violations. I, I do want to bring that up with HIPAA viol, potential HIPAA violations and that registration, if it's going to, that exemption, if it's going to list that, because these are going to be public record, is that HIPAA violation going to be clearly out there? How is that information going to be redacted?
Right. Let me just address a few of the concerns, if I can, right now. Maybe not all of them, but I'm going to try and address a few of them. First off, the city's concerned about the safety of, of all of its citizens, no matter who owns the property. We have got professional firefighters, okay? They are trained very, very well. And when they're on a scene, they gauge what's going on at that scene and I, I trust they're, they're going to protect and save anybody who's in there as well as save themselves. Now, professional firefighters, okay? I'm not one, you're not one. I bet you we both respect heck out of them.
Absolutely.
Okay. Now, I do know that, that recently the fire department and the gas department has got a much better working relationship. So we're, so things are going on between the fire department and utility for the safety of firefighters and the safety of neighborhoods, safety of gas, gas employees. I'm not sure if you knew that or not, but those type of things are going on, you know, kind of behind the scenes that, that's, I think, a very big positive. There was a presentation at the ordinance review committee, probably in this actual chambers, is that correct, the chairperson of the ordinance review committee? And we're not the first city to do this. I'd imagine this ordinance is based upon Cincinnati, Dayton, other cities in Ohio that, that have this type of registration. Now, common sense and discretion, I hope, controls some of those issues that, that you have brought up. But we're dealing with safety here, safety of citizens, safety of firefighters. You heard about the neighborhood, I'm not sure if you own the property, but that, that definitely opened my eyes quite a bit about what's going on in neighborhoods that have dense, dense housing. And you could hear it long as I have. Well, I'm older than you, I'm sorry. I've been here a lot longer than you.
Much, much.
You have seen the city, walked through this city, drove through this city in the dense neighborhoods. And the houses can be on 50-foot lots, they're right next to each other.
Mayor, if I may interrupt, could you please speak into the microphone a bit closer?
I need to correct myself. I am so sorry, Dan and everybody outside, but I'm done, I'm done talking. Okay. That's all I want to say anyway, but I will talk better now into the microphone. Thank you. See, I mean, let's just see how this works. I mean, it's not, we didn't dream this up ourselves, okay?
Right. And there have, there have been issues with the other cities, you're right. It's, it's, it's a replication of that. But the answers still aren't there. If the, respectfully, Mr. Mayor, if, I mean, is, is a registration for a vacant property automatically going to keep the fire department from doing a search? I mean, that's a simple question.
Out of respect for the rest of our agenda, some of the folks who want to speak outside in our executive session, which will be incredibly long, it might even go into Thursday at this rate, I'd like to go to the next speaker, but I've got you down to speak when we talk about Adams School. Is that still correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Okay, let's get number two out there and...
Will we, will we be getting email responses to those questions?
I believe, okay, do we have on the, I believe, I believe the fire department or some folks probably already have your email. Whoever you sent your email to in the city, there'll be some kind of response, there'll be some kind of response to you.
Okay.
Okay.
These questions, all right, thank you.
Thank you. I got Phil Morcal as second. Third, no, I got you as second.
Oh, I got you. I thought you meant I was Phil Morcal as the second.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Good afternoon and good evening, Mayor.
Apologize to you.
That's okay. I've been called worse, sir. Good afternoon or good evening, Mayor and members of council. I am Phil Morcal III. I am a business owner and property owner here in the city of Hamilton. I'm also a former fire safety professional for 20-plus years with the city of Oxford. It's the first full-time firefighter hired there. The state of Ohio is assistant state fire marshal for southwest Ohio, Montgomery County, Preville, Green, Butler County at times. And then finally, the city of Sharonville, they hired me over at the state. Been in government for almost 30 years and always worked to be cooperative and worked to be collaborative in how we get issues settled. I'm now presently a Realtor, family, family traditions, I'm the second of three generations. I am on the legislative agency committee for the city, for the Cincinnati Area Board of Realtors. I'm the vice chair of government affairs for the Dayton Area Board of Realtors. I'm on the government affairs committee for Butler Warren. I'm here tonight to talk about the vacant housing ordinance. Hearing a little bit of what I just said, you ought to know that my first priority is the safety of everybody, including our firefighters. Having been there, been in the boots, been on the mask, been in the buildings, had encountered fire deaths, investigated deaths, I understand the importance, but I think the city has rushed to judgment on this. 2016, this lobby was filled with people. And I think some of you will remember that a chance started about drained a swamp, well, the swamp is still here apparently, because we were told that we would have meetings with Mr. Smith about, about the ordinance, that we would be able to come to a resolution that would be applicable and meaningful for everybody. We had one meeting, I think, that was at Ryan's, and then after that, I heard nothing. And my interest was really piqued. Now, I wanted to talk about a few things that Chief Mercer talked about, and no disrespect to Chief, he's a great professional. The various fires he quotes in the 900 block of Glenwood, or Greenwood, I'm sorry, was there any, I have some questions, I'm not asking for answers now, was any arrests made in those fires? Because having property area, I heard, and I think I made a call even, that there was one person who was a suspect who was setting all these fires. If an arrest had been made, perhaps that would have been solved. Now, currently, we have something going on in the city of Hamilton. We'll have vagrants in buildings. I encountered, I made national news a couple of years ago because we were assaulted. It was Realtor Safety Week and I was assaulted, my son by a man threatening to have a gun. That guy got 18 days in jail for breaking into the property and assaulting us. I've come into about five more encounters since then, one with five vagrants in it owned by a property owner, Mr. Tom White. They were taken into the police station and basically released. They were never prosecuted. And according to Mr. White, this is hearsay, I'll admit that, he was told by the detective that, and I do respect the police department, so he could be wrong, that if they had no prior warrants, they weren't going to process them. There was not enough room in the jail for them. So we're, we're encouraging bad habits and violations of law by not enforcing the laws we have now. In that five-person incident, I was knocked down by two people and thank God some neighbors, business owners down the street saw, came in and broke the thing up. I've been assaulted by two other people and I didn't even make a call because I knew nothing was going to happen to them. So we need to enforce what's going on with the vagrants. If that's who you're targeting, who set these fires, I don't think it's mom and pop next door, but sometimes it is mom and pop. When I worked the city of Dayton for the fire marshal's office, they would burn a house down if it had a fire, make sure it's gone, taken care of, because the city took too long to take care of it. Especially another one was crack houses, when they had people doing drugs out of there, police were not responsive, couldn't find evidence. The neighbors took care of themselves, they burnt the houses down. So what, what I feel is going to happen here is that most of these fires, by looking at the stats, are probably in low-income areas of the city where people are stretched out. The 2019, 2020, we had a lot of people not working.
We've got a minute left.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, thank you. So I think what you're going to be doing by doing this, you're going to redline the city. You're going to redline the city to outsiders, saying, these are bad areas of town you don't want to come into. And we don't need that, as a real estate professional, we don't need a reputation in Hamilton as being a redlined city. So there's a lot of things I'd like to talk about. I've got three pages from the chief's presentation that I think we need to be discussing about. I do appreciate your time tonight. I am very open to sit down anytime and help the city. I've told the mayor, my neighbor, for business. And how many times do I bother you, say, I'm here to help you with my expertise? I mean that, I love this city, I want the city to prosper by what it done right and fairly. Thank you for your time, appreciate you.
Let's work together. Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
That's time.
Okay. Third, for vacant properties, I got Greg Lanich, and if I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
Sir, you might wait until I start the timer. I'm probably going to take up the whole time.
State your name and address to the record, please.
My name is Greg Lanick, live at 750 Dick Avenue, Highland Park, Hamilton, Ohio. I'm a 50-year resident of that neighborhood this year. So a property owner, residential and commercial investment property owner, a graduate of Richard T. Farmer School of Business at Miami University, a state-licensed commercial plumbing contractor, and a voter in precinct 2AF, and I take it seriously. I own six residential units in the city of Hamilton. I own six residential units in the city of Hamilton. Now, my first point is, everything that this vacant registration ordinance is, or legislation is supposed to address, is already addressed in the health code, in the building code, and in the nuisance, the nuisance abatement process that came about as a result of the committee that our city manager Joshua Smith appointed, which I was lucky enough to be the small potatoes landlord on that committee, and I got to participate and volunteer my time for a year of meetings. And at that time, the fire chief, which I understand is retired, and I congratulate him on a long career, but at that time, he was satisfied with working through the health code, the building code, and the nuisance abatement, and agreed that all of the concerns could be addressed through there. So that, the question runs in my head, why are we doing this now? And, you know, what's the result? What's the gain for the city? Well, it's money through the registration and through the fees, and it's power, it's a power grab and a money grab. You know, the rental property committee met to discuss this and other issues for a year, and at the time, it was, yeah, you know, we still see a need to do commercial, but, you know, through the recommendations of the committee and the existing nuisance ordinances and the health department and building department, we don't see a need for that. So I'm trying to figure out what has changed. I mean, it's just a big slap in the face of the rental property, the investors who don't trust the city, and I think this is evidence, good reason, why we shouldn't trust the city. You know, abandoned properties are still going to be abandoned, whether we have this registration or not. The only ones that's going to, this is going to hurt is, you know, the small-time landlords who are out there trying to get things done and working on the side, you know, that's how I got my start, I went out and I bought one rental property and rehabbed it over a winter. It took me about six months. The next winter, I thought, this is a pretty good gig, I'd do this for the next 12 years, you know, maybe I can quit my day job. But that's who it's going to hurt. It's going to hurt that somebody's going to come along and put graffiti on the garage, and then that's going to be a health violation. And the house is vacant, well, been vacant 60 days or 120 days, automatically, it's got to be registered, going to be subject to fines. It's, I just, I got a real problem with serving on that committee for a year, and all the recommendations that came out of that committee, and there were a lot of good recommendations, and I applaud Joshua, and, I mean, the dude would come in and he would take the department heads head-on and say, "Well, okay, you've been doing that for 20 years, why can't we do it this way? Why can't we figure out a way to do it this way?" And everybody that came to those meetings put in good, honest, hard-working ideas, and a lot of them came to fruition. But have we implemented that with the customer service department yet? I haven't seen in the paper or heard that we did.
We've got one more minute, sir.
Okay, well, I'll defer my minute to somebody else that might want to speak on that.
Mayor, may I address?
Please do.
First of all, I want to thank you, you were an excellent member of that committee, and the information that you provided was very helpful. The thing, though, maybe I'm missing some point here, and I want to maybe ask Chief Mercer about this, I don't see a scenario where you have a property that lands on a vacant property registration list. For example, let's say that they want to, let me go to a microphone, so maybe they can hear me better.
The purpose of the vacant property, as explained to me through the fire department and the other departments that worked on this, is simply to get the properties, especially the ones that have not had utilities on for a long time, and make sure that we can identify those, and that does a couple of things. First and foremost, it allows our firemen to understand the property a little bit better, hey, this property does not have utilities, it's been vacant for a while, and that helps them in their planning process, because we do have technology now that provides better information as they're being dispatched to a, like a house buyer is an example. But, so in most scenarios that I'm hearing, unless the property is without utilities, is boarded up, I don't think most properties will end on a vacant property registration list. This is simply identifying the properties that are truly a danger to a neighborhood and to the fire department. That is the sole intent of the ordinance. From a money perspective, there's no money gained from the city on that, I mean, we're doing inspections regardless, so any, all this is doing is it allows us to recover the cost of the vendor that is helping us collect these properties and put them into a centralized location. That's it. You know, I double-checked with the fire department on that, I wanted to make sure that this was not something that we're charging additional monies for, this is simply to cover costs, to actually pay for the software and to have a vendor from the outside help us put that information in. But to your earlier point, and I've talked to Chief Mercer several times about this as this legislation, when it first hit the ordinance review commission last September, when we sent the presentation to the IPOA November 3rd asking for feedback, I kept asking, I said, "Is there a scenario in your mind where a legitimate property lands on this?" And he said, "If they come and it's someone that someone said earlier, something about someone being in rehab, or maybe someone lives in Florida for a couple of years, they just don't come back, are the utilities on, is it grasping mode?" The answer is yes, they're not going to be on a vacant property residential list.
Okay, if good judgment is always used, and, you know, I'm not going to say anybody's going to intentionally misuse their judgment, I'm not saying that.
No, but it's a fair point, I understand what you're saying.
I do want to say, the penalty is $100 per offense per day. It doesn't take long to rack up enough penalties to put on your taxes and take the house. So, I still don't understand, if the house is abandoned, there's ways to address that with the health department, to get it boarded up, to get it secured.
I will tell you, in the 10 years I've been in Hamilton, dealing with the health department and these properties that you're referencing, the ones when the utilities are finally turned off or they're boarded up, I can tell you how many times, over and over again, they get broken back into, people are inside. We have some kind of mechanism where if someone is truly, has a vacant property and they're not maintaining it, there's some mechanism that, first and foremost, our fire department is aware of it, so they can understand the property, and second of all, in my mind, it provides an incentive for them to either do something with the property, they can sell it, they can fix it up, there's a million things they can do with it, but the one thing we don't want for our neighborhoods is for the property to remain with utilities off and boarded up for long term.
I agree, I don't want to see properties like that boarded up, but you're going to have the same, having a registration isn't going to solve the problem, it isn't going to solve the problem. It isn't going to cause somebody to say, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, I got to register my property, I better run over there and cut the grass and board it up." It's just, I mean, it's already can be addressed through other ways, just my opinion.
It's, again, I mean, my crystal ball is no clearer than yours, is it going to help? I would like to think it is, I can tell you, in the communities we talk to that have it, they believe it has helped, they believe what it does is it helps maybe some property owners that have vacant properties to make decisions to either improve it, to sell it or something, so it does not stay boarded up and impact the neighborhood long term. That is the hope with this, and in conjunction with keeping the, you know, the fire department safety, personnel safe, so I mean, that's it. I mean, again, will it help? I certainly hope it will, if it doesn't, then council certainly can take a look at it and ask for a performance report, and if they don't think the performance is there, they can just kill the legislation.
You know, if you go through this, any minor violation, tall grass and vacant is automatically makes it eligible to go on this list.
Mr. Mayor?
Was that, are you?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Comment?
First of all, appreciate you working on houses, I kind of like doing that myself, but the, I think, do they have a copy of this on the exhibit number one and under the 1507-02 definitions? I think evidence of vacancy is a really good description, is the way I read this, of what we would be looking at, and if you read that, it makes it pretty clear that they're not going to attack you, a person that, like Joshua said, that has utilities on, that's working on a house, I mean, you're being productive in the house, reading, from what I read on this and reading on this, this is some of the stuff that we don't want in the neighborhoods, this is nothing you're working on, and I don't think anybody would want what's in this evidence of vacancy next to their house. I mean, I sure wouldn't, and I just, I guess I'm kind of lost in what you're misunderstanding or what everybody's misunderstanding, I, you know, I think something's got to be tried to, you know, to see if it works, but then if it doesn't work, we do have the power, correct, to stop it. And I think, you know, like you said, it's worked in other areas, and nothing's going to be perfect, but I think this evidence of vacancy, if you read that whole definition, I'm hoping you see that it protects you.
Let's ask, do you have a copy of the most recent?
Probably not, I have whatever was online, but it says the structure is deemed to vacant property if unoccupied and unsecured, there's 11 different things.
What he has is a redlined version showing the edits and the changes to the legislation, I can give him my card and give him a copy.
Yeah, I think I need to be made available to him, but, I mean, it looks pretty clear to me on this.
Everybody out there, if they want to get something sent to them, get the cards out there.
Sure.
The property is deemed vacant if it has, if it's unoccupied, so in between tenants, and has an outstanding maintenance violation, that could be graffiti, that could be peeling paint, I mean, that could be a broken step.
Here's what I think we got to do, is I think you need to make sure that you have our city clerk's card, so he can electronically send to you the version that we have in front of us.
Maybe the city, or the citizens ought to be able to see that, so that they can come speak their mind, I mean, we don't have the accurate, up-to-date information.
Well, let's get that into your hands as far as his card, so we can, so you folks can exchange the documents, and all the folks out there should hopefully be able to get it sent to them electronically as well.
Mr. Mayor, if I just may, and the clerk can verify this, but I believe the copy of the ordinance was posted with the agenda on our city website as of last Friday, correct? That is correct, the agenda was, but we were, I believe there were edits that were made this afternoon in agreement with, well, the only edit was 60 to 120 days.
That's correct.
Everything else is exactly the same, except for that one change.
That's correct.
Yeah, and Mallory just reminded me, it was an amendment to the industrial vacant property ordinance, so it just added residential as an addition.
Do you want to claim one without the red line? I'll touch the city clerk.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Eric Vincent?
Good morning, thank you. Eric Vincent, 3189 Princeton Road, Hamilton, Ohio. I had the pleasure of working with the city of Hamilton a couple of years back, especially with the city manager, the fire chief, police chief, and several other members of the staff, and we worked on the nuisance ordinance. It was a long journey, we had a great conversation every time we got in there, we were able to work through different ideas, discover where there were misunderstandings and where there were problems, particularly at the utilities, was one of those particular areas. But that nuisance ordinance was designed and expressed to us that it was going to solve a lot of these problems that we're talking about now. And in fact, if I could have, if I heard correct, at least one of the buildings on Greenwood was part of that nuisance, was flagged with the nuisance ordinance, does anybody know the, I couldn't quite hear when the fire chief was presenting that. So maybe 940 Greenwood was vacant and it was an ordinance problem. The question is, why wasn't that pursued further? And then it was registered as a nuisance that didn't stop the fire. So registering it as a vacant now isn't going to stop the fire. So I am concerned about that. We're adding more paperwork, more ideas, more rules, where we could back up and simplify and use what's already on the books. We worked really hard to get that, and from my understanding, it has been very successful, it's worked well, you know, the fines that go with that are good, but now you're talking about, in the ordinance and what I read, is that you're going to look at utility usage to determine vacancies? I know the city manager has said that, no, we're just going to look at the ones that are problems, but in the ordinance, the wording says we're going to look at utility usage. And so I'm concerned about that. If the paperwork says one thing, but the city manager says another, I'm a little confused by that. And then a couple issues that I want to make sure that are taken care of. If my property is for sale, am I allowed to sell my property? So if I've got a house that's vacant, it's probably not worth a lot of money, so I'm probably going to sell it myself. So is there an allowance for me selling it myself for sale by owner? Because I don't believe there's a law stating that you have to have a real estate agent selling your property, so that's the one thing that I was wondering about. The other one, and I didn't think about this when I was talking to Aaron Hufford earlier, I just rented one of my properties in Middletown, it took me a year and a half to rent that property, because I won't rent to somebody that has money still owed to another landlord, right? It may have been a year ago, it may have been two years ago that they, that that happened, but if they owe money to that person, I am essentially taking money away from that person, and I won't rent to them. So my property sat vacant, and in the conversations out there in the hallway with some of the other, the housing providers, the same thing, they've said they've let theirs go without anybody in there. So will that be something that we can get an exception for? Ultimately, I'm asking you to maximize the tools that you've got. I think the nuisance ordinance works as long as it's used in pursuit. It's obviously not being used right now to its fullest, I don't believe, because there's a lot of houses out there that are not vacant, that look a whole lot worse than most of the vacant properties that I see. And I think after 20 years of being an investor and trying to find vacant houses, I've gotten really good at it. And so I generally can pick out the vacant houses, even if their lights are on and they're in good shape.
Sir, you might wrap it up, please.
Well, Eric, let's just see how this particular legislation works, hopefully hand-in-hand with our other legislation to make neighborhoods safer. We all need to, well, already in here, the structure is deemed vacant if the property is, and it does list these 11 areas, let's just see how this works in action, and maybe it works hand-in-hand with what we've already got, may not be need be used that often much, who knows? But let's just see how this plays out.
And do you truly believe that by registering it, that's going to stop it from being a fire hazard?
Well, I'd like to see how the vacant plan process and the approval of vacant plans works, okay? Did you want to say anything else, Mr. Manager?
Yes, I was going to also thank Mr. Vincent for his time on the committee, you brought, I think, several very good things to the table, certainly caused a lot of thought. I just wanted to clarify one thing regarding the chronic nuisance, to me, that is a different animal than what we're talking about here. And the exact scenario that you brought up, for sale by owner, to me, I was just chatting with the fire chief back there and how he would evaluate that, because I think it's a fair question. Again, if it's for sale by owner, let's say it's on the market for 18 months, you've got it for sale by owner, sign in the yard, the grass is mowed, utilities are on, he said that's an exception. So again, this is for the neighborhoods that have been crying to us, saying, "This house has been burned, it's been boarded for two, three years, the utilities have not been on for three years," the things that are really detrimental to the neighborhoods, that is the intent. And that, again, I know I've said this many times, but it's in conjunction, so the fire department, they know exactly what's on that list, they can put that information department, they know exactly what's on that list. They can put that information to their technology. So as they get dispatched to a property, they can bring it up. There might be special notes because of that being on there. I don't see a lot of properties in my mind landing on this unless the utilities are off, it's boarded, grass is not being mowed, so that means we're sending out our crews to actually mow it and try to put it on a bill. And I think Chief Mercer said it right earlier. We can do a lot to a property, including demolish it. I advised Mayor Pullman, asked a very good question. I know people say, well, the city can recoup their money. Well, the city only recoups their money if something happens at the time of sale. A lot of times, it never happens. I mean, we can sue, we can do a lot of things, but if we invest our money on the front end, there's a lot of times, I can tell you, in the 10 years I've been here, we've not gotten the money on the back end. And that's our taxpayers picking up that tab. That's all I think we're trying to avoid. This helps us with the worst of the worst. That's not, not even a chronic nuisance. A chronic nuisance is more, you know, we've had three drug convictions in 30 days at a property. This is purely just about vacant properties that are clearly vacant, not someone doing the right thing, trying to sell it, anything of that nature.
Do you recoup your money if in the end the owner doesn't pay and they walk away from it and then you have to turn it, you have to tear it down? How, I don't see that as any different than this being the chronic nuisance. It's a chronic nuisance, I would think.
The chronic-
Or it's a health department issue that-
The chronic nuisance really for us is more criminal activity based. This is more, this property is just sitting there boarded, utilities are off, grass is growing high. The city is sending our crews out instead of working on the streets or other things. We're now mowing someone's yard because it hasn't been mowed in five months. I mean, that's more the intent of this ordinance. The chronic nuisance is really more about the criminal activity taking place in neighborhoods and trying to root that out.
Okay. Anything else?
No, thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Want to bring back in Dan Acton?
This for the rezoning, Mr. Mayor?
Those are the four that we have for vacant building.
Yes.
I was going to go to Adams next for the zoning and have Dan come back in again. Again, let me go ahead and say this first, if I could. Linda Cheek had an email that she sent to us. It was written to the record. There has been a bullet point by bullet point response to that letter, which I believe she received today by email. Is that correct? So some of the concerns that she had, we've addressed in an amendment that went to the city council, but also went to her.
It was also included on the agenda that was posted last Friday, Mr. Mayor.
There you go.
Well, if she just got her letter today, how is it placed on the agenda Friday?
No, it's probably both, but we just made sure she got one electronically in case she didn't pick it out of the agenda.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm confused. I went to public school, so it just didn't comport. Okay, again, Dan Acton, 410 Columbia Road. Questions about, continue to surround the Adams Elementary School property, or former Adams Elementary School and Beeler Park. I just, I really haven't heard any responses back from the lack of transparency and that, from council or from the administration regarding the issues and the zoning changes on the property, poorly if, and most probably improperly enacted executive session with the Architectural Design Review Board, and many misstatements by the administration regarding this. In fairness, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your time in speaking to those issues. As always, you know, I've seen you to be very, very open and transparent with those negotiations. I agree with you, but if something comes up, Ms. Cheek did send me that email, or the email that she received today, but there was, there's no commitment that I've seen to preserve the Beeler Park property. It says, you know, it alludes to it, yeah, we're, you know, we're kind of, it was donated and everything else, but if that's the case, I'm not seeing why we're rezoning the property. Again, that just doesn't make sense if we're going to maintain that particular parcel as the publicly donated lands for a park that it was. Why would, we would need to go with a zoning change on those particular, on that particular property? Again, just seemed like another step, unnecessary step. The Adams Elementary School property, Mr. Mayor, I believe you were at that planning commission that was done via Zoom or electronically. You're aware, but perhaps the other members of the council weren't aware, I was refused the, any details on that. In fact, it was presented at the planning commission for the other members of council and others in the audience, that there was no due diligence that had been performed on that property. In fact, and I was in constant search of that with the city administration and was told, finally told that, you know, somebody was looking around, but there was no due diligence, et cetera, et cetera. But it was discussed in an executive session with a non-stakeholder and Architectural Designer Review Board. I'm not sure how that got to be scheduled, but that seems, seems kind of odd that non-stakeholder can have an, call an executive session on a property that they don't own or control. When I tried to get the details of that, I was told they were unavailable because they were undercover of the executive session. And again, on that planning commission night, I was told that, or the planning commission and its esteemed president of planning commission, I'll refer to him, Mr. McAllister, was instructed that there was no due diligence, when in fact, the very day of the planning commission, just by happenstance, meeting with one of the neighbors on the Rossville side, on the southeast street side, I was given engineer stamped plans of that development. I'm not sure on the various designs, what the interior renderings, and engineer stamped plans. I'm not sure how a statement that nobody's done any due diligence, when in fact, they've had secretive executive board, executive session meetings and engineered stamped plans and architects and builders, builders and developers involved, how that doesn't, how that can't be described as due diligence.
One minute is distracting.
So I just want, I would encourage council and the administration to bring some transparency to that transaction. If there in fact is a builder that's looking at that property, it needs to be done correctly. It needs to be done with the input of the people, not in the $300,000 section, as was done before. They were, they were revealed, the people in the $300,000 boundaries of the properties were given a wine and cheese party at a well-known architect's house and were given all the plans that I was told were undercover of the executive session. There's something wrong with that, Mayor. There's something wrong with that. Those people on the other side of Adams Elementary School that will be directly impacted by that project with the traffic, with the noise, with construction noise, with the utility interruptions, are as important, if not more important, than the people in the $300,000 homes. So I would, I would ask that, and if somebody's doing it, why are we changing, changing plans when the engineer already has a different layout, plat layout for the property? So it's going to have to come back yet again.
That is time.
Well, Dan?
Other than that, thank you very much for your time.
Let me address a few things. Dan, I just know that our city professionals addressed point by point the email that Linda Cheek sent to us, and it covered all the issues. Lot size, Beeler Park, the duplex issue, increased traffic, information to neighbors if something does continue, the developer interest. It was all addressed bullet point by bullet point. And you mentioned Beeler Park. I've read the handwritten deed. I am as strong as I can ever be on any other topic when it comes to the donative intent of somebody who gave something to the city to be specifically a playground or a park. And so as long as I'm around, I could never vote for anything which would take away the donative intent of what a family gives to this city.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
And I guess, and the other issues that were addressed in the letter to Ms. Cheek were very well grounded, but what wasn't addressed by Ms. Cheek were the, were the misstatements, intentional misstatements by the city, and that's something that there should be someone from the administration and council looking into those.
We believe we've been responsive to what's been brought up on this. We have Linda Cheek to come in next, so.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Linda Cheek. I've heard my name thrown around like mud out there. Dan is a friend, or acquaintance at least. I am still concerned about the plans for the Adams Elementary lot. With the lot sizes that are shown, we're still not seeing what the actual lot sizes will be. The other thing that was stated, and I'm kind of off-center because I just got that email today, when I got off work at 4:00. So I really didn't get a chance to go over everything, but one of the points was that there would be at least two off-street parking. Two off-street parking is not enough. In that neighborhood, already on my street, the entire street behind me on Milliken, on the street on my side, cannot park in front of their houses. They have to park in alley parking, or they park their cars over on my street. I have a couple of neighbors that bring their cars over and park them in front of my house. I have to call a neighbor and say, you want to move your car, I'm going to Wheatie, okay? It shouldn't be that way. And when you consider a home with several bedrooms, you're going to have at least one or more children, more than likely. And when those children become teenagers, they're going to be driving, and that's going to be a third or a third and fourth car. There needs to be more parking available in the City of Hamilton. I don't know how many of you have driven down Coral Lee or the opposite end of Ridgewood that I live on. You can't drive, two cars cannot pass. And you can't get around each other either unless somebody, unless you're pulling aside where there just happens to be a small gap or where the fire, can't think of the word, but, or the fire extinguisher.
Hydrogen.
Thank you. Where that is, there's no place to go. And what I see with what you're discussing with that lot is more houses, more cars, and no place for the people to be. And there's going to be all the additional traffic as far as, you know, deliveries, you know, everybody getting grocery deliveries, UPS deliveries, Amazon deliveries. It's a lot of traffic. And we've been a happy little one-way street with very little traffic. It's been extremely safe. It's a safe place for the park. And adding all that traffic is not conducive to the neighborhood that I've grown to love. I bought that house when I was 21. I just turned 60, so yeah, I've been there a minute. And I just really think you need to consider, I think we need to see, the neighbors need to see what's going to happen before things are moved on. We're going to have to live with your decision. And I can't get a lot of the neighbors to even bother to come because they feel like you guys are going to do what you're going to do and what we think doesn't matter. So I think, I think you need to let us know what's happening before you make moves.
Ma'am, what if we did this? If you, it's number nine on the agenda, so it's going to be voted on relatively soon. If you want to come back and speak after you read it again, I'm okay to give you five more minutes to do that. If you want to read it again, then come back. But it's going to be voted on here relatively quickly.
So you are, you are voting on it tonight?
Actually, it's number nine on our agenda for a second reading and a vote. Now, I just want to mention about the parking. The R2 parking zoning and the TN1 zoning is the same as far as two off-street parking spaces. But I know so many parts of our city seem to have been built when you had like a car per house, or maybe on the average, a car and a half per house. I imagine you're in that neighborhood. It's kind of like a lot of Lindenwall seems to be the same way too. So I, it's just more cars.
Which is the point I'm making, you know?
One minute.
We don't need to follow the mistakes that were made before. It needs to be thought about.
If you want to take a minute or two to come back before we vote, I'm fine with that since you just got it today, but we are trying to be responsive.
Oh, I understand, I understand that, and I appreciate the response. And really, those are the big concerns I have, and I think, and the park needs to remain a park, and it needs to be put down in stone somewhere so that when you're not here, Mr. Mayor, it will still be a park.
I know exactly what you're saying.
We have, we have really no signage, and we're not getting any attention. It took us forever to get any kind of equipment over there. You know, it shouldn't be that way. That's all I really have to say. I appreciate your-
Please, hold on one second, Linda.
Can I ask for clarification?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you believing that we're voting on a new development?
No, I'm believing that you're changing the zoning.
Okay.
And I think the zoning, the size of the lot needs to be larger-
Okay.
-than what you all are considering. I think that's not being paid attention to. And because we did it wrong 100 years ago, doesn't mean we have to keep doing it wrong. We all know that.
Yeah.
I'd like to do something real quick while you're here, Linda.
Yes.
Ms. Hayden, can you answer just a couple of questions that might be helpful? I mean, one question I, the TN1 is supposed to create a neighborhood which is more walkable and traditional. Can you give an example of how the TN1 makes a neighborhood more walkable, traditional, and the like?
Yeah, so the traditional neighborhood zoning is something that the city created a couple of years ago and would like to implement in all of our urban and traditional neighborhoods, but have been stopped because of COVID. But what, the thing that we think is most attractive about it is it has stronger design guidelines than our other zoning districts, and it basically says, you know, look at the surrounding character as you design your buildings. And it also has, so, you know, so stricter rules about materials and architecture. So that is part of the character of the neighborhood. But specifically about the walkable, it does allow houses to be built closer together and also closer to the street so that it's more in line with how our traditional neighborhoods were built.
But if you look at our neighborhood, our neighborhood does not look like that. We are not as close. Milliken Street is, but our side of the neighborhood is not. And I think that's what you're missing. And which neighborhood are you going to line it up with? Milliken Street, D Street that has the huge lots, or R Street that has the bigger in-between lots?
Yeah, we'd have to look at all of them.
And I think that's not being considered by trying to put it back into that smaller neighborhood closer to the, closer to the street. That also doesn't leave for the, the closer to the street doesn't leave the area for the parking either.
They would have to have parking, off-street parking. So it would allow for it because it's a requirement. But I, so it looks into, so basically, it is a challenging area because the lots are so different around it, but we have, the way it's written is that you look at the surrounding lot sizes and do an average. So you'd be looking at, you know, certainly bigger lots than what you see on Milliken.
But that's what I'm saying. We still cannot see what you're looking at.
Because there's, because there's no development being proposed tonight.
But shouldn't it be, I think that lot size should be set before the zoning is changed, is what I'm saying. We need to see what the lot sizes are going to be before it's changed. The other thing that was said was that there could not be duplexes because there are not duplexes in the area. There are.
Yeah, there are some duplexes.
There's several duplexes.
But generally speaking, it's single family.
Okay. That's, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right. There should be one more person out there, I believe, Daniel, possibly evolving to something on Pleasant Avenue.
Pleasant Avenue.
Yep.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Michael Bisson. I know that you dealt with this last-
What's your name and your address?
1201 Grand Boulevard. What was the other question?
Your name?
Michael Bisson.
Okay.
I know you dealt with this last year, or last week, but it's on here again. I'd like to request that whenever there's a conveyance, whether you're buying or selling property, that you list the amount. I noticed there's amounts listed on the agenda, but not for conveyance. That's it.
Okay.
Although, where's the fire chief? We have had dealings, we've had dealings over the commercial property.
Would you wish to maybe speak to him outside?
I've always felt, I've always felt he was a good man to deal with.
There you go.
I'm just backing up what you said. Liberal interpretation.
Thank you. We'll take that.
You're welcome.
We'll take that.
I'm against, I'm against the issue, but he does do a fine job and he's fair. That lady is too. I've dealt with her. I talked to her on the phone today, I think.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that takes care of Audience and Citizens, I believe. All right. We now go to Senate Agenda. It's all meeting minutes, all staff reports, caucus reports, and information to report regarding 1036 Arbor Springs Drive. We have no committee the whole, so we have got, it's like six different items of the caucus agenda. Is there a motion regarding the caucus agenda? Or the consent agenda, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Vice Mayor Pullman?
I was going to use what you were saying.
Make a motion that with the exception of the items so noted, council, we see the reports of the consent agenda and concur with their recommendations?
So moved. Motion to move Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Brown. Caucus agenda has to do with disposal of property at 128 South C. Existing self-storage facility, expanding a drive-through, right-of-way dedication on Northeast Street, new subdivision regulations, and a D1 liquor permit. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We now go to council actions pertaining to legislative items. No, except the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council is furnished to print a copy of each, excuse me, a copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Motion to move Councilmember Ryan, second by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We now go to Agenda Item Number 9 under Pending Legislation. Second reading of an ordinance involving changing the zoning of Adams Elementary School in Beeler Park.
An ordinance amending the City of Hamilton's zoning ordinance number 7503 by changing the zoning of the former Adams Elementary School in Beeler Park from R2 Single Family Residence to TN1 Traditional Neighborhood 1 Zoning District, second reading. Now, Mayor, I believe you said that you wanted Ms. Cheek.
If she wanted to come back in again, she could. If she had a chance to read it, she's out there.
She's not in the lobby, sir.
Great, all right. Thank you. Is there a first on this particular ordinance, second reading?
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
I have a comment.
Okay.
Or maybe a question for Liz. Liz, first, if this is an R2 right now, it really doesn't, if we vote this down, then there still can be a project put on this, correct? Is what you were saying? Just a little bit more zoning hoops to go through?
Yeah, we try not to have, we try to align the zoning with what the development will look like. So if something has 10 variances, that's not ideal, so we try to avoid that. So, looking at that zoning and what we think is a good, that urban walkable, we thought it would be better to have the new zoning that we created a couple of years ago that would make it less likely that development would need variances. But the, but the, what's appropriate in that neighborhood, I think from what I've heard from our, you know, our comprehensive planning processes, detached, single-family homes, and that can be done either in R2 or traditional neighborhood one.
And I, and I have, something I do have a concern because I took customers back there all the time, you know, back in that neighborhood, all over those neighborhoods. And, you know, according to Experian Automotive Survey, right now, the average American owns 2.28 average cars right now, and 35% own three or more. There's not enough room back there. That's my concern. And so that's, and I know we would protect the park. I think there's a thing that needs to be done to protect the park and somehow say that nobody can do anything with this. But my concern are the vehicles, and I think she has a great concern on there. And my opinion, if it stays at an R2 right now, I don't think we're hurting much. And, you know, they're just going to have to go through the hoops, you know, go through the other zoning. And that's my stance on it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I also have a question for Liz. When you said there's no development yet, development does come to light. Does it go through planning, and do the neighbors have another opportunity?
Absolutely.
Appeals and all that?
Right. It would be a standalone project.
Okay, because I'm, I'm, you know, it's one thing to see things on paper and read about it, but I really am of a mind, unless you're living there, I mean, people have to tolerate so much that I don't think that we should impose something where we're not living in that neighborhood. So I just would want to be sure that they truly would have a recourse to be listened to when a development came up.
Absolutely. Everything, everything that goes to Planning Commission, and this would need to go to Planning Commission for a lot of different things, for plating, for, you know, for just the plan. And so the neighbors within 500 feet get mailing, inviting them to the hearing. And we would make sure that it was an evening meeting and that there would be plenty of notice. And probably for something of this magnitude, it would be over multiple meetings so that there'd be, so it'd be maybe two meetings in a row that people could provide input. Something that also we would do specifically for this site is, it's in a historic district, so which is why there was a conversation at the Architectural Design Review Board meeting about this site is because it's regulated by a different board, the Architectural Design Review Board as well. So they had separate conversations about this site. But it's between a historic district and a non-historic district, and the neighbors outside of the historic district are arguably more impacted by development there. So they will also get letters notifying them of any architectural design review board meetings that this would be relevant for. So there'd be a lot, a lot of opportunity to provide input for our proposal there. And for the parking, I don't disagree about the parking. Those are just our parking regulations that are stamped, that are separate, no matter what the zoning is. Detached, single-family home needs two off-street parking spaces regardless of the zoning. And it's probably a good idea to, you know, take a look at if that's no longer, if it needs to be more than that, you know?
Because how do you make them? I mean, you can say that's what it should be.
Right.
But if somebody has three cars, or whatever the situation is, whoever gets home first gets the parking place. And somebody, if you're parked in front of their house, you're walking two blocks away to park, so.
Right.
I mean, that's the reality, the people living within their neighborhoods. So I'd really like to be sensitive to that.
For sure.
I'm not saying that you guys are not, at all.
For sure. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I would concur. When I drove through the neighborhood and looked at, as Ms. Cheek shared with us this evening, neighbors passing on the street because it is a one-way street through Ridgewood and through Coral Lee, and I was surprised at the, at the density and the number of vehicles that I had to let go through just while I was driving through the neighborhood near the Adams site as well as near the park that we discussed. And Mayor, you know that I stood with you a few weeks ago and said that nothing would happen to that park and to that small area that butted up to it now where there are posts blocking that from the Adams School site. So, Liz, I agree with what Vice Mayor Pullman shared, with what Councilperson Fear to share in things on density, that this has to go through a process. It concerned me when Ms. Cheek said she talked to her neighbors and they feel like city council has already made a determination in this, and they don't have any recourse. Yes, they do. So I'm all for development, but it's got to be strategic and fit the plan and things like that. So I use the word density, and that really does concern me in what might come down the road.
Other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
So, ADRB, sorry, ADRB had to approve this rezoning. What was, I don't understand their role.
So a lot of things are getting kind of mixed together. So there was a developer that came and expressed interest in the site, who is still actively interested in the site. And they said, you know, we don't want to even look at anything. We don't even want to do any evaluation of the site if we can't get our general concept that we do other places approved by the Architectural Design Review Board. So they were not involved in an executive session, but because there was a real estate transaction involved, there was an executive session at ADRB specifically about a development that was, hey, would, would houses like this that have front-loaded garages be appropriate, basically? That was the conversation, very, very preliminary with the Architectural Design Review Board, that additional conversations with the developer had us evaluate the zoning. And we realized that whether this development goes forward or not, we thought, the staff thought it would be a good idea to propose rezoning at Traditional Neighborhood 1, to prepare it in case this development or some other development moves forward. So Architectural Design Review Board has not been involved in any conversations about rezoning, but did have a conversation about design of houses there, which is not something that is really, really about this rezoning exactly, but they're kind of confined, and it's kind of hard to explain, I guess.
Okay, and so that explains some of the confusion from the citizens who came forward today saying there are things going on that it just doesn't look right, sound right, and.
Right, they wanted to know what ADRB knew, and so, and they were right. And we have since sent them all the information.
Okay, all right, that helps clear it up for me too. Thank you.
Other questions? What, if anything, comes back to city council once there is some development going on? What comes back to us? What, if anything, comes back to us?
Well, we would hope, we think there, it's extremely likely that any development would need a new plat. The lots that exist that were, that were built, that were made 100 years ago are not how we would like to see development there. So city council would vote on a plat, so the actual design, the layout. And then it depends on the route that it goes, but Planning Commission will vote on certain things, Board of Zoning Appeals might vote on something. It just, we just don't know enough about the development. And then what, what, if anything, would go back, housing design-wise, would need to come back to the city council? I'm not sure. They're just not, it's just not far enough along to know.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
So the city doesn't own the property, that's correct?
The Board of Education does.
Correct. Could that be sold to one person to put a house on it?
There are 54 lots there that could be sold individually.
Okay.
But there aren't streets there, so each individual person would have to build a street.
Lot of infrastructure, rupture.
Okay, okay. I was saying, like, one person said, "I would love to have this lot, this little park."
Oh, the whole, yeah, somebody, one person could buy the, all 54 lots, combine them, and do one house there.
And still has to comply with architectural design and things like that?
Correct, and they would, and that process would still come, because it's still plat, would come to Planning Committee, or city council.
Right, right, okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I do have one other thing. First, I hate feeling like I'm putting you on the hot seat because I appreciate so much the foresight that your department tries to go through in looking at everything. And like I said before, when you see it on paper, it does sound like a good idea. But when a person comes that is going to be living it, it does make you think twice about it. So please don't take this as any criticism. Was this, did they come to planning to talk about this at the time?
I have been in conversation with the two people that came to the meeting tonight since before Planning Commission, and have had, and these conversations have been ongoing. I don't, I think I've talked to one other person in the neighborhood. And so it, yeah, I don't think anybody else has reached out with any questions or concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Is there a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Nab.
I move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second. Motion to make Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Ryan. Is there any further discussion or comments or questions at this time? Hearing none. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman?
No.
Fear?
No.
Vaughn?
No.
Ryan?
No.
Nab?
No.
Nab, oh, sorry, Brown?
Brown, yes.
Mueller?
No.
That ordinance is defeated. That is one yes, two six no's. That ordinance is not adopted.
Okay, we go to Agenda, item number 10. Second reading of an ordinance involving the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnerships.
An ordinance approving the City of Hamilton's annual action plan update for fiscal year 2021 through 2022, delineating the statement of objectives and proposed use of Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and Home Investment Partnerships Program Funds, and authorizing the submittal of said plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
Motion to make Councilmember Vaughn, second by Vice Mayor Pullman. Any discussion or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, seven zero.
And we go to Agenda Item Number 11. Second reading of an ordinance involving the registration of vacant industrial buildings to include vacant residential properties.
An ordinance amending and supplementing the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Chapter 1507, registration of vacant and industrial buildings to include vacant residential properties. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Vaughn. Questions or comments on this one?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I just have one comment that kind of goes along with number nine and maybe a reverse order. I will be voting for this because I, again, feel like the people that we're forgetting about are who are living next door to these properties. They're the ones that we're supposed to be speaking for. And I know that they've had representatives from IPOA here. We have our own representatives. But unless you have to pull in and out of your driveway to see that stuff, you can't appreciate it. And I believe the good will outweigh the bad in this. I believe that we will monitor it. If we have to change it, we will. But I think this is a good thing to do.
Thank you. Other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
I'm going to agree with Councilwoman Fear on this. This is another tool that we can use to get control of the blight, to reduce the blight. This is something that we can use that will keep our first responders safe, and that will keep our neighborhoods safe, and that will hopefully reduce the amount of deterioration that we're having in our historical neighborhoods, and hold those accountable who are being negligent. It's not fair, as Carla said, it is not fair for the old ladies that live in Lindenwall that are 80 years old, been living in the same home for 50 years, and they got to wake up and stare at a, at a home that is, is causing problems for the neighborhood? It's not fair to those folks, and we got to fight for that. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Yeah, I got a call today from Lenny on Parish Avenue, and lived there for a long time, cares about the neighborhood. She sees what you've just described. It's about safety. It's about seeing how these ordinances can work together to improve our city.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I had a call about a month ago from a resident on Greenwood and talked to me. She's a nurse at hospice. She talked to me about the blight in her neighborhood and concern that we just talked and heard from Chief Mercer tonight. So I concur with Councilpersons Ryan and Fear on their comments this evening, that this, again, is another, as Michael said, it's another tool in our toolbox and helps the people that are in the neighborhood that have lived in these places for a long, long time, want to take care of their property, and it got played around them. So I'm going to be voting yes on this ordinance as well. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hey, roll call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, seven zero.
And we now go to new legislation, Agenda Item Number 12. First reading of emergency orders involving pay range.
An emergency ordinance amending Schedule D2 Emergency ordinance amending Schedule D2 of the city's classification and compensation plan relative to the pay range for Assistant Law Director temporary as set forth in ordinance number OR 2019-8-78, adopted August 24, 2019, amended from time to time, and repealing the relevant portion of the existing Schedule D2, first reading.
Okay. Agenda item number 13, first reading of an ordinance involving foreclosed property registration and notification program.
An ordinance supplementing the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, by adding thereto a new chapter within the health code, Chapter 1707, foreclosed property registration and notification program, first reading.
Okay. Agenda item number 14, first reading of an ordinance involving preliminary and final plat for the enclave at Twin Run.
An ordinance approving the preliminary and final plat for the enclave at Twin Run, Section 3, consisting of 9.9 acres of the enclave at Twin Run subdivision situated in the First Ward north side of the City of Hamilton, Butler, Ohio, Butler County, Ohio, Charles W. Thornton applicant, first reading.
Agenda item number 15, first reading of an ordinance involving amending a section of Chapter 943.
An ordinance amending Section 943.051 of Chapter 943, electricity of the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, first reading.
Okay, we go to agenda item number 16, first reading of an ordinance involving an abandoned gas station cleanup.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute and deliver the abandoned gas station cleanup grant agreement with the Ohio Development Services Agency for 101 Pershing Avenue, first reading.
Okay. Go to agenda item number 17, resolution involving an annexation into the City of Hamilton.
A resolution authorizing the annexation of the City of Hamilton of 2.297 acres, more or less, of property owned by the City of Hamilton and located in St. Clair Township.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion to Councilmember Fear, second by Councilmember Ryan. Any discussion about this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman. Yes. Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number 18, resolution involving, revolving loan.
A resolution authorizing a revolving loan to Dorana Hybrid Incorporated, Dorana, in a sum of no more than $50,000 for the redevelopment of Dorana's 903 Bell Avenue location within the corporate limits of the City of Hamilton, and authorizing and directing the execution of an economic development agreement with Dorana for said purposes.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Fear. Discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Pullman. Yes. Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Brown, yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Go to agenda item number 19, it's a resolution involving an objection to liquor permits.
A resolution withdrawing the objection to the new D2 and D3 liquor permits for Tachira Los Compadres LLC at 2780 Dixie Highway, Hamilton, Ohio, 45015.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Nab. I move the resolution be adopted. Second. Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Ryan. Comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call vote on this one?
Pullman. Yes. Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Okay, we got to 20 already. We go to agenda item number 21, resolution involving a green space development.
A resolution approving the lease of certain real property located within the City of Hamilton's Ohio's urban renewal area to Lorana Wong for the purpose of green space development, 118, 122, 124, and 128 Wilson Street.
Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor Pullman.
I think a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion to Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Vaughn. Comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call.
Pullman. Yes. Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Go to agenda item number 22, resolution involving a lease of property, 746 Lynn Street.
A resolution approving the lease of certain real property acquired through the land bank to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, 746 Lynn Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion to Councilmember Fear, second by Vice Mayor Pullman. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Pullman. Yes. Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.